City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that City Council has returned from closed session with no reportable action.
Okay, if you can please join me first, Councilmember Hibbert will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Councilmember Murphy will then lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. Please rise and put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious Lord, we humbly offer our gratitude for providing us a place to come together to share ideas, thoughts, and discussions with respect and compassion. Heavenly Father, we express our appreciation for your guidance as we embark on the journey of making decisions that will not only shape our present community, but also pave the way for the future. We thank you, Lord, for always standing by our side and helping us through the challenges we face so we can walk the right path and choose serenity over stress. And, Lord, please keep our soldiers, first responders, our families, our loved ones, our friends, in your protective embrace, and keep them safe under your watchful care. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll start off with presentations. Chief, I believe you got the...
All right. Thank you all for being here today. Today, we get the honor of having somebody sworn in this evening for their oath of office and adding to our police department. So if I can please have Lizette Sanchez please come forward. Okay, and please announce the addition of Police Officer Lizette Sanchez. Lizette was born and raised in Illinois. She has a bachelor's degree in forensic criminal investigations from Lewis University. Prior to moving to California, Lizette was a police officer and evidence technician for two years with the Spring Grove and Glendale Heights Police Departments. She decided to move to Illinois due to the harsh winters. Some of the fun facts about her are that she is the oldest of four siblings, is a foodie, tries to take a trip at least once a month, and enjoys photography. She has that in common with Emmeline. She currently lives with her girlfriend Christine and their two dogs, Levi and Wrangler. She's excited to continue her police career with the city of Los Alamos. Please join me in welcoming Officer Lizette Sanchez to the Los Alamos PD team. And her badge will be pinned on today by her girlfriend Christine. Please come forward. All right, Lizette, if you can turn and face me, please, and repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Lizette Sanchez.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Just want to make this easier for you to hear. And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well
And that I will well
And faithfully discharge
And faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties
Upon which
Of which I will
I'm about to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations. Okay, here's your opportunity to say a few words.
Well, I would like to thank everyone that came out here to support me. I am excited to continue my career here in California. As you mentioned, I was a police officer in Illinois, and now I'm excited to get out here and protect the residents of Los Alamos.
We can have the City Council come join us, please, for a photograph. And then, once we're done, have all the PD come forward. And last but not least, we'll have the family come forward for photographs.
All right. Thank you, Officer Sanchez. Good luck to you. Now, we have the honor of the presentation to our own Councilmember Dobie in recognition of being honored as Assembly District Seventieth's Woman of the Year. And for that, we have a representative from our Assemblyman Tretah's office, Michelle Schutz.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Michelle Schutz, and I'm here representing Assemblyman Tretah. We have all of Los Alamos, which we're very honored to represent. And again, as the mayor mentioned, we are here to recognize Councilwoman Dobie as the Woman of the Year for the Seventieth District, which is a very, very huge honor. And again, thank you guys for having us here as well. Tanya does, I would say, what's expected of a City Councilwoman and mayor and stakeholder times a million or somewhere around there. She, as many of you know, didn't stop, was at everything she could possibly be at. But it's the way that she did it that really impressed the Assemblymen in our office. Spirit, blazing trails, just the heart that she put into it. And with that big heart, she never stopped and still doesn't stop. With a big heart, I'm going to say the word "fighting," always for Los Alamos, making sure that Los Alamos is always included and gets the support that you guys deserve and everything like that. So it's been amazing what she's been able to accomplish. I'm not sure that she'll ever stop, which is why we love her so much and appreciate her so much, and again, why she's been chosen. The Assemblyman was super sad he can't be here because he has to be in his favorite place, Sacramento, unfortunately, on Mondays. But he did actually want to say something personal, so if that's okay, we'll go ahead and do that.
Good evening. I am Assemblyman Tretah of the District Seventieth. I represent Los Alamos, the community of California, and this is a picture. Thank you to the man, Mr. Gauze, for inviting me here today to recognize Councilwoman Tanya Dobie, my 2024 Woman of the Year, in every sense of the word. Tanya embodies dedication, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the community she serves. She is a model, a trailblazer, who lives within the equitable heart of what she goes. Her ability to navigate that cross-selling is truly admirable. Tanya is a rare leader whose passion and dedication to the people of Los Alamos is immense. An honor to recognize you, Tanya. Thank you so much, because we are knowing of all that you have done and all that you continue to do.
On behalf of Assemblyman Tretah and our entire team, we are so proud to present you with Woman of the Year, which you have won. I know we also have some guests that are not here just to support the Councilwoman today. So if anyone that would like to be in the picture or do not, that would be great.
If we can get one more round of applause for Councilwoman Dobie. Yeah, thank you. At this time, we're going to do the certificate, present a certificate to Marina Mitri, the owner of Marina Skincare, in recognition of being featured in the Mayor's Business Spotlight. Marina, if you can come up. Let me just read a little bit here. First of all, the Business Spotlight program is free, is a free business recognition program designed to create awareness about the variety of local businesses located in Los Alamos. This Business Spotlight program is a great way for the city to say thank you and showcase businesses in Los Alamos and provide another tool to help businesses grow. This month, again, we're recognizing Marina Skin. Marina Skin's mission is to create a skincare regimen that suits your lifestyle. They use a wide range of high-performance skincare products that will reveal your natural radiance. You will see significant changes in just weeks, 100% satisfaction guaranteed. Marina Mitri has been a skincare professional for over 25 years. She has practiced skincare therapy in Europe while attending the world-renowned... You're going to have to help me with that. Is it... Let me try. Guino?
Guino, yeah.
Guino, Guino Institute in Paris. Marina is a medical esthetician specializing in teen acne, pigmentation caused by hormones or sun damage, and anti-aging. And at this point, if you want to say a few words, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm so pleased and happy, and congratulations. Thank you, Trish. Thank you to everybody who supports my business. I've been in business for 26 years and 10 years in Los Alamos. And I like Los Alamos because I feel like it's a small city, and I always look for more support. I know there is a lot of businesses like mine. The difference between one and another is how you customize your specialties to deliver to the client or the patient. We don't only work with women, we work also with men as well. And we have a lot of treatments for every condition. My specialty is to customize the treatment for every person's skin condition, especially challenges, which is when somebody has a problem and is not able to figure out what to do with that problem. So this is my specialty. Thank you very much to have me here tonight. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Special certificate of recognition. So let me give that to you. I think now we're going to show just a quick, a brief excerpt from the video that we taped. Okay, you can, the full video is available on the city's YouTube channel after tonight's meetings. And these promotional videos are provided to our participants free of charge to help spread the word about their business, so you should get a copy of that. And if there are any interested businesses who would like to be a part of the Mayor's Spotlight, please reach out to the Development Services Department and City Hall. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, I'm just going to stay up here. We have a presentation of proclamation to Orange County Fire Authority and Westcom Dispatchers in recognition of National Telecommunicators Week. And if I could have the members of the OCFA and Westcom Dispatchers come forward, please? Before I hand out these certificates, let me just read a little bit. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is this week, April 14th through 20th, 2024. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. The prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. The safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone our dispatchers. Public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. This week is in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. So with that, I want to award a proclamation to the Orange County Fire Authority, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. It says, whereas emergencies can occur... I just read that, so let me just go ahead and present this to you. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. And this is to the West City's Police Communications, again, the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I happen to sit on the Westcom Board, so I'm familiar with what they do and the services they provide. And on behalf of the city of Los Alamos, I would like to present you with this proclamation. Thank you very much for the work that you do.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much. My name's Craig Kovey, Division Chief. That covers fire services for Los Alamos. So really, this recognition's very important. So Westcom is the primary dispatch center. When you call 911, Westcom is the answer first. Our agency partners with Westcom. If it's a police matter, Westcom's going to handle it for Los LPD. If it's a fire or medical emergency, they transfer the call to us. So it's a real seamless relationship between the two. And I appreciate the fact that you're recognizing both tonight for what they do. I've said this before, I have an extra, kind of an extra bit of a heart for 911 dispatchers because my mom was a dispatch supervisor for 20 years. So what these folks do, I have an intimate knowledge. I've had those conversations with my mom when she got home. And had one time when she was a new dispatcher, a man walked into the dispatch center with a gun, and she had to sit there, come and collect, put her foot on the pedal, talk on the radio, and say, "Well, sir, why are you in here with a gun?" and get the help come in, maintaining her composure during that. And then I have a clip here, if we don't mind playing, Wendy. This is an example of Mr. Medina here, Wilbert Medina, on a 911 call that he took just the other day.
My friend Medina, what's going on?
Why do I feel like I'm going to lose my mind? She's so...
Okay. Okay, was there water in the tub?
Yes.
I need you to get her flat on her back. How old is she?
One year old.
Will you get her flat on her back? We're going to do CPR. Is she breathing?
Hurry, please, go.
Okay, then, I need you to take a deep breath, and we're going to start CPR.
Right, I'm ready.
Okay, well, you're going to put my hand in the middle of her chest.
Yes.
And be tender enough to land, and you're going to push down hard and fast, okay? Is she breathing normally?
No, really, she's not breathing.
Is it chill? Okay, we're going to continue CPR then. Is that her crying?
Yeah. Is it crying? Breathe it out.
Okay.
Truly a high-pressure job. Our center, last year, answered 911 calls 228,000 times and dispatched 178,000 emergencies. So really, an incredibly busy center, 500 calls a day. And they did this at a rate, the national goal is a minute and four seconds. We averaged 54 seconds, excuse me, 57 seconds on all these calls, from time they answered the call, time they answered the call to the time they had resources en route. Just an amazing stat for our center, and we're super proud of them. We have a couple other members up here. So there is a national dispatch, I guess society is a better word, I'm not sure of the exact word for it, but they do, association, that they give out awards. And Mindy was recognized as one of the award winners in that for a call she handled up in our canyons where a gentleman attempted to commit suicide in a remote area of our county. She calmly, correctly got him through, or the caller, through it, got all the police and fire emergency services up there. We rescued him, got him to hospital, and the gentleman survived. So she was recognized that with a national award. Our, one of our supervisors was recognized as the Supervisor of the Year, and another member was recognized for awards. So we've got some truly talented folks up there that I'm very appreciative and proud of as an agency, who are supporting all the residents of Los Alamos countywide. So again, thank you, Council, Mayor, for recognizing our dispatchers. Really unsung heroes who are the first to serve, and they do an amazing job, both at Westcom and with Orange County Fire.
Good evening. Just wanted to do a kind of brief overview of what we do on our side of things. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, and City staff, and the Los Alamo Police Department for having us here today for this recognition. It is my great honor to speak to you this evening about National Telecommunications Week, which is observed annually during the second week of April. The city recognizes our dedicated dispatchers who work tirelessly from behind the scenes to keep our community safe. Westcom is a joint powers authority. We provide dispatch services to the cities of Cypress, Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and we also contract with the Orange County Park Rangers. Westcom serves over 90,000 residents, and it covers a service area of 23 square miles. Westcom processes over 126,000 calls a year, 28,000 of those being 911 calls, and they handle over 74,000 incidents a year. They are the lifeline for police officers, providing vital information and support to ensure that they can respond safely, quickly, and effectively to emergencies. We also work closely with the Orange County Fire Authority Dispatchers by transferring them all calls that require fire or medical assistance. And we work alongside them Thank you. Ensuring all public safety needs are met. Dispatchers are the first level of contact with the public in the event of an emergency, and they require a very unique skill set to perform the job. They work very long hours, and they deal with challenging and stressful situations daily. Being a member of the Communication Center is extremely rewarding as each member exhibits pride, dedication, integrity, and top-notch customer service to the residents and the visitors of all the cities. Thank you for this recognition and the honor of serving your city.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for all you do. And now we have a presentation by John Kennedy, General Manager and Van Tran, Director of Orange County Water District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. Unfortunately, our Director Van Tran became ill over the weekend and is still not ready to come out in public. So I'm going to take over for him and give the presentation tonight. So I'm John Kennedy, General Manager of the Orange County Water District, and passing out to you recycled water from our famous plant. Some of you have already tasted this water, but I'm not sure everyone has. Anytime during the presentation, feel free to take a swig there. So our water district, we're located in Fountain Valley. We were formed in 1933 to manage our local groundwater basin. Mother Nature blessed the northern half of Orange County with a groundwater basin, and our job is to properly manage it. About 85% of the water you drink is coming from the groundwater basin. So when you go home tonight and you get that glass of water, you'll know 85% is coming from our local groundwater basin. The other 15% is imported from the Colorado River or from Northern California. I, we serve 2.5 million people. We have a 10-member board of directors that guides us. Director Tran is one of those people. And then we also protect our rights to the Santa Ana River. This shows the boundaries of our water district, and you can see it's roughly the northern half of Orange County. These 19 agencies here pump groundwater from the groundwater basin. Now, if you go down into South Orange County, into San Clemente, those areas in South Orange County, 100% of the water they drink is imported water. So we're very lucky to have a groundwater basin. Groundwater is less expensive, it's cheaper, it's more reliable. And so we try to make as much available as we can. And Golden State Water Company, we have Ken Vecarelli here, who manages your area. You can think of us, think of me as a wholesaler, and then Mr. Vecarelli from Golden State is a retailer. He pumps out my groundwater, he pays me for that, and then he turns around and serves the groundwater to the residents of your city. We have lots of operations. We've made a lot of investments in the groundwater basin over the decades. We have the groundwater replenishment system that I mentioned, the water you have. It's the largest facility in the world, largest recycling plant in the world. We capture a lot of water at Prado Dam. When you drive out to Corona and you see Prado Dam on the north side, we work very closely with the Corps of Engineers to capture water coming down the Santa Ana River in the wintertime. We have a thousand-acre recharge system. In the city of Anaheim, when you're driving on a 91, you see a bunch of these lakes. Those are our recharge facilities. We're diverting water out of the Santa Ana River into those recharge facilities, and that water is going down into the groundwater aquifers. We have a water quality laboratory where we do lots of testing to make sure the water is safe and reliable. A research group testing new ways, new innovative ways to treat water more cheaply. We're part of the Santa Ana River watershed. The Santa Ana River watershed starts up at Big Bear. And you come down from the mountains, go through San Bernardino, through Riverside, through Chino. All of that area is part of the Santa Ana River watershed. We work with all those agencies in managing the watershed and do lots of programs with them. We have 400 acres of constructed wetlands behind Prado Dam. We divert the Santa Ana River through these wetlands, and it gives the Santa Ana River natural treatment before the water comes into Orange County. And then we have a very robust environmental and stewardship and habitat restoration program also behind Prado Dam. This just represents all of the different sorts... This just represents, um, all of the different sources of water that we're putting into the groundwater basin. That pump you see there represents, um, Golden State Water Company and the other cities that are pumping groundwater out of the basin. But we're, we put in a variety of different types of water into the groundwater basin. We, we will buy imported water and recharge that into the groundwater basin aquifers. The local rainfall, that water will get into the aquifers. The groundwater replenishment system, the water you're drinking now, we, we put that water into groundwater basin. And, um, and then on the far right, the Santa Ana River. Uh, we, we get a lot of water coming down the Santa Ana River. Uh, this schematic is just to give you an idea of what the groundwater basin is. It's a, it's a cross-section. So you slice the groundwater basin straight down and you're looking at it sideways. Those blue areas represent the different aquifers in the basin. And an aquifer might be thirty, forty, fifty feet in, in depth and it contains sands and gravels and water is in the aquifers. And a company like Golden State will drill a well and that well may go down a thousand feet. It will pierce those aquifers and then they're able to pump that groundwater up to the surface and, and serve it to the residents. On the, my far left, your far right, you see the Pacific Ocean. The Pacific Ocean is actually connected to some of those aquifers and it will come into our groundwater basin if we're not careful. So we actually inject water along the coastline to create a hydraulic barrier to keep the Pacific Ocean from coming in and contaminating the groundwater basin. Uh, this pie chart is kind of our, it, it is our water supply portfolio. Shows the different sources of water that we have and use to meet the total water demands in our service territory. I'll just go through this pie chart quickly, but we have, uh, Santa Ana River base flows that come down year-round. We capture that water. The Santa Ana River storm flows in the wintertime when it rains, we captures as much of that water as we can. Uh, the light blue is natural incidental recharge when it just rains. In Orange County, some of that water gets into the groundwater basin. Uh, the orange, orange color, that's the groundwater replenishment system. And then what I really wanted to highlight is the very top slice of the pie in the yellow, it's imported water. And we only need imported water for about nine or eight, eight or nine percent of our water demands. That percentage used to be a lot higher twenty, thirty years ago. We needed a lot more imported water to meet demands. But we've created a lot of local water supplies for our area and we're trying to get off the imported water system and we've created more reliability for everybody with more local water supply. So, uh, something we're very proud of that we've done. Uh, want to talk about Prado Dam a little bit and I mentioned you see Prado Dam when you drive out to Corona. We work very closely with the Corps of Engineers. They operate Prado Dam, it's a, it's a flood control facility. But we work with the Corps to capture that water coming down the river in the wintertime. Uh, you might see a new acronym out there, F-I-R-O, F-I-R-O, Forecast Informed Reservoir Operations. All that means is we're using the latest technology and, um, new ways of predicting storms. We see storms out on the Pacific Ocean. We're using the latest technology to predict exactly where those storms are going to hit in our area. And the bottom line is we can operate the dam more precisely and capture more water behind the dam that then we can later put into the groundwater basin. Uh, we also work with the Corps just storing more water behind Prado Dam. And, um, but when you store more water, you're flooding habitat behind the dam. So, um, we also have programs to create more habitat at higher elevations than that allows us to store more water behind the dam. So we're just maximizing the utility of that dam for the benefit of our area. The groundwater replenishment system that I mentioned, biggest facility in the world. Uh, it's been online since two thousand and eight. Uh, it's, if you're not aware of it, all the wastewater being generated by your residents and your businesses, we can now recycle. So when you go home tonight, take a shower, get a drink of water at the kitchen sink, flush the toilet, wash dishes, you're generating wastewater. That wastewater first goes to the Orange County Sanitation District, our sister agency. But then they give that wastewater to us and that's the source of the water that's in your bottles there. Uh, we treat the water to drinking water standards and then we use that water to replenish the groundwater basin. So it's, um, we're treating the wastewater like a, like a resource. And, uh, we've been very successful and we give lots of tours. Some of you have, um, been on the tour of our facility. If you would like to come down, just get hold of me and we can arrange a tour for anyone or any group that would like to come down. Just protecting local water supplies. We may have the most monitored groundwater basin in the state. We have a lot of, uh, people go out taking, taking water samples. A, a lot of people taking water samples, we bring it back to our laboratory. We do, uh, lots of testing. I sell groundwater, I have to make sure my groundwater is safe, meets all state and federal standards and we, we ensure that with our, uh, our laboratory. Uh, my last slide, I just wanted to mention, uh, the Orange County, uh, grand jury about two years ago now came out with a study saying that our district should merge, consolidate with the municipal water district of Orange County. I mentioned we're a wholesaler. The municipal water district of Orange County is also a wholesaler. And the grand jury came out with a report saying you really only need one wholesaler in Orange County. And, and we agree with that in general. And so we have asked the, um, Laughco, local Laughco to officially study this issue. Laughco would be an objective third party that can study exactly how would you consolidate and how would it happen? That report will come out this summer. So you may see, uh, articles in the newspaper talking about, um, our district consolidating with, uh, with MODOC. That's their acronym. This is something to be aware of. That concludes the presentation and I can answer any questions.
Because, have any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Um, are you still seeing cities, um, implement purple pipe?
No, because, um, with our project, there's no need to.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, give us that wastewater. Uh, do not put it in a purple pipe system. Give it to us and then we'll put, we'll treat it, put the water in the groundwater basin and then everyone can drink the water.
Perfect, thank you.
You don't need a dual system.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming out. I, I went on the tour and happened to sit next to Lisa Haney. So between the tour and eight hours next to her, I, I had no idea all of this is happening. The, uh, the Prado Dam was, I think, what, what blew me away and how, um, I'm not sure what it's called, Tiger Tales or something that absorbs nitrogen because there used to be cows or dairies out in that area. Um, I thought it was fascinating. I came back from the tour, I requested the presentation because I was so impressed by the groundwater reservoir, the operation that's happening here in Orange County. And could you, uh, you had mentioned the tour and it, and it's open to ratepayers. Could you mention if someone's interested besides council, it's probably a little bit easier for us to get ahold of you. But if a ratepayer wanted to go on that tour, can you mention how they would go about that?
Yeah, so you were on, it's called the Groundwater Adventure Tour. It, it's all day and you see all of our facilities. We'll feed you, we bus you around. And go to our website and look for the Groundwater Adventure Tour. And I, I think you can sign up right now. And if any of the other council members are interested, let me know. But the general public can, um, do that right now.
Wonderful, and what's your website?
Um, O C W D dot com, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Um, would you be able to give a brief summary of how the water is treated in Orange County?
Sure, um, for, well, for our facility, the, the water, the wastewater you generate first goes to the sanitation district and they treat it to what's called secondary standards. And at that point, you can discharge the water to the ocean. But, but as, as I mentioned, we're taking that water and treating it to drinking water standards. So we first run, run the water through what's called, uh, microfiltration. It's a filtration system to filter out, uh, anything in the water. Then at, after that, it goes through reverse osmosis. And reverse osmosis is kind of the workhorse of the system. And, um, the membranes on reverse osmosis are so small that you need pressure to push the water through the membranes. And the, the pore size in the membranes are so little that only a clean water molecule can come out the other side. So that's how you get the clean water. And then after that step, we hit the water with UV light. Uh, it's almost like an insurance step, uh, in case something got through the reverse osmosis membranes. But then at that point, you have drinking water, which you all have right now. So that's our, that's our treatment for, um, reusing wastewater. Was I, was that, did I answer the question?
You did, thank you so much and I appreciate that presentation. I also attended, um, um, a walk tour and it was just phenomenal just looking at the facility and all the resources that you're offering to Orange County. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We appreciate it. All right, at this time we have oral communications. Any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Madam clerk, did we have any speakers? We do not, okay. Updates from the mayor. I'd just like to remind you to join us for the senior prom on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at the American Legion from three P M. to six P M. There will be a live band, dinner and dancing. Purchase your tickets in advance as the event does sell out. Visit the city website at W W W dot city of Los Alamos dot org and go to the recreation page under events to register. Three to six, huh? Burning it late, huh? Um, at this time we have updates from the city staff. Uh, city manager Simmons, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, sir. Actually, I'd like to first turn it over to Director Noda to give some updates on a couple of events that we have upcoming here in the city.
Thank you, good evening mayor, members of the city council. Uh, yes, I just want to add on a couple of, few more events or programs that we have going on. So the first one is our Arbor Day celebration. Um, uh, come celebrate Arbor Day and of course, the city's focused on expanding its urban canopy. Uh, Arbor Day event is, uh, at Laurel Park on Thursday, April twenty-fifth from two-thirty to five P M. Um, with the generous donation from Epson America, our neighbor here at City Hall. They donated fifty seedlings for people to come and plant your own tree at your own house. There will be free games, snacks, face painting, and of course, come out and assist, again, expanding our urban canopy, we'll be planting a couple of trees at Laurel Park. Uh, the next event is in association with the city clerk's office and our waste, um, hauler, universal waste system is our neighborhood cleanup event. Uh, this is where Los Alamos residents can come out to Pine Street on Saturday, April twenty-seventh from eight A M. to twelve P M. to dispose of their bulky items, their e-waste, and of course, the free, uh, paper shredding event. So again, that's the neighborhood cleanup event at Pine Street on Saturday, the twenty-seventh from eight A M. to twelve P M. Um, I also want to announce that our Parklet Series, our Party on Pine is back. It begins on May second and runs through June sixth. So Pine Street will have a live band, kids activity, and the Los Alamos Community Foundation Beverage Garden. It will be, um, every Thursday, again, starting on May second from six-thirty to, um, starting at six-thirty P M. So come out, have a great time and, um, support local business and listen to the band and buy a beverage from the Community Foundation Garden. I also want to mention that our revive program is ongoing. Revive, uh, in case people at home is not listening or is, um, doesn't know what it is. It's our commercial facade improvement grant program. Um, and that is ongoing right now. And so please, if you're a biz, if you're a business owner in Los Alamos and you want to improve your facade, uh, please visit the, uh, city's website, grab a, the application, submit that in. Um, and again, visit the city website for revive or any additional, um, information on the events that I just said. Thank you.
Namaste mayor, I'd like actually, uh, if I could turn it over to the chief. Uh, I will start by saying there, one of the few things that is very scary about being a city manager is when you get a phone call from the chief of police in the middle of an afternoon. Um, but in this instance, it was, uh, a lot of good news. So, uh, with that, I'll hand it over to the chief.
Uh, thank you, sir. I wanted to provide the mayor and city council updates on, uh, an investigation that occurred. Uh, some of the great work, uh, I wanted to highlight that's being done by the Los Alamos Police Department. Uh, the Cypress Police Department received a call for service, uh, from a bank manager requesting a welfare check on an elderly, elderly woman who is attempting to withdraw twenty thousand dollars in cash. Officers from the Cypress Police Department arrived and learned the woman attempting to withdraw the funds was a Los Alamos resident who had fallen for a typical phone and internet-based scam and that the suspect, who had been in contact with the victim, planned to have a co-conspirator personally pick up the funds from the victim at her residence in Los Alamos. Uh, the Cypress, uh, Cypress Detective Sergeant, uh, informed us that a similar case occurred in Cypress last week and the victim in that case handed off thirty thousand dollars in U S. currency to an Asian male who was captured on, uh, closed-circuit television camera as he left the location. Uh, we were provided a copy of the photograph of the suspect in the Cypress case and arranged to take over the investigation involving our resident. Patrol officers responded to the bank with detectives and took the initial crime report, informed a plan to partner with detectives from Cypress Police Department to conduct surveillance at the victim's residence and attempted to contact and identify the suspect if they responded to collect the funds from the victim. Uh, Los Alamos, Los Alamos PD detectives consulted with the Orange County District Attorney. They formed a plan that involved our detectives waiting with the victim at their residence, monitoring communications with the suspect, coordinating the surveillance and safely detaining the suspect. Patrol officers supported the surveillance operation with a, with perimeter and uniform presence in the event the suspect was contacted. The suspect arrived a short time later and attempted to retrieve a brown, a brown bag from the, uh, victim's front porch of the residence that he believed to contain twenty thousand dollars. He was safely contacted and detained by our detectives and it was noted that he closely matched the suspect's physical description in the Cypress PD case from the previous week. An investigation was conducted and the victim of the Cypress PD case positively identified the suspect as the man who took their thirty thousand dollars. A search of the suspect's vehicle was conducted. Evidence from several money orders of over ten thousand dollars each and mail receipts indicating the suspect was routinely shipping items to New York. Uh, the Cypress Police Department booked the suspect, uh, for the previous week's fraud and elder abuse case. Uh, their report, uh, was, uh, referred to the Orange County District Attorney's Office who will be linking the two investigations.
Nice.
If I can also highlight one last thing, uh, this, uh, case was so successful that a local news station came out and, uh, made a news story of it, which was on Channel Two News.
Is there a clip? We've been getting clips all night, is there a clip?
There is one, but I unfortunately don't have it for you right now.
Um, I did want to mention though, that given the rise and the prevalence of, uh, you know, these types of scams, uh, we will be taking this opportunity to develop kind of an educational campaign around this where we'll be able to use this as a prime example of if you see something, it doesn't feel quite right, this is what you do and obviously being able to show what exactly, uh, the type of response that you get from law enforcement, how they're able to walk the individual through the situation, I think this is great. Um, I have had the opportunity to see the clip and, uh, I don't think I've seen a more, uh, well, spry, first of all, uh, senior, but also someone that was, uh, just genuinely just thankful for the fact that one of our detectives sat in the, her house with her, walked her through exactly what was going through, talked her through the process. That's, uh, um, again, chief, incredibly well-done work and, and kudos to your officers.
And I just want to say thank you so much. You guys did so well that it was in my neighbor, um, neighborhood. That made my neighbors thought you guys were FBI because you were so covert and just, just amazing. They were extremely, just extremely excited and enthusiastic that you guys have worked so hard. So I made sure to clarify and I made sure to tell them, no, it was our Los Alamos Police that did the work and I was just very proud, very proud. So thank you so much, yeah.
And mayor, I, I have one more, but I don't want to steal your thunder if you're going to mention it later, but just about Michelle Steele's, uh, roundtable for mayors and city managers.
No, go for it.
Okay, so, uh, the ma, I have the, uh, the distinct honor of attending a mayor and city manager roundtable with Congresswoman, uh, Michelle Steele this past week. Um, as you all know, uh, Michelle Steele was able to actually get, uh, the city of Los Alamos over five-hundred thousand dollars in this last budget cycle for an active transportation program, um, which again, is part of, uh, our ongoing effort to have shovel-ready projects for when funding becomes available. Um, we can very quickly submit those projects and get those funds coming in. During those conversations with all the cities that are under her jurisdiction, which includes a number of cities in Los Alamos, or, I'm sorry, I'm not expanding our borders yet, um, in Los Angeles County, um, we were all talking about the different elements that we would be looking to move forward with, um, in the coming year. Uh, we spent a lot of time actually talking about, uh, the city's ongoing efforts with the base and our desire to bring a regional E O C. to the area. Um, during that meeting, um, instantly, all of the surrounding cities and those in L.A. as well instantly seized on the idea of why this was important to them. And, uh, as you all know, we have a tendency to operate within our own cogs within, you know, the iron curtain being dividing L.A. and Orange County. I've since had a number of conversations with L.A. city, uh, city managers. I've since had a number of conversations with L.A. city managers who are looking to figure out a way to help us with this endeavor. This has all translated into a staffing briefing that's going to happen on the base for all of the government officials, or what I'll call the staff-level officials in both L.A. and Orange County, to actually come to the base and get a briefing as to what exactly we're trying to accomplish on the base, but also about what exactly our specific goals are with regards to the emergency operations centers that we think we can house there. Getting that kind of support in a room from cities that are obviously not normally part of our normal cadre of what I'll call allies was incredibly impressive, to the point where mayors from other cities were stopping our mayor and myself before we left the room in order to talk about how exactly they might be able to help. That only happens if you're in those rooms. So, again, Mayor, thank you for making the time to attend that meeting. And then, obviously, I can see a number of visits that we'll be needing to make in the future to some of our surrounding cities. But again, another great step forward for putting projects from Los Alamos on the map.
I agree. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
At this time, we will-
I got questions.
Oh, yeah?
Two questions.
I remember the mic. So, you mentioned getting the information for Crime Stoppers to our seniors. How do we make sure we get it to everybody? Because I think part of it is just getting the information out, and what's, we got a plan? You working on a plan?
We have a couple of different options. Well, actually, I think we have a couple of different roads that we're going to take. One, obviously, is our print media and how exactly we get those out. We have a senior club that is incredibly active that will be tapping them in order to get this information out. But also, given the fact that there is media that's already been produced for this that we can use, I like the idea of pushing that out as well to everybody, just because it tells a very human story, and quite frankly, I think everybody will connect with that as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they get their little hands on it. And then, Dr. Noda, the events that you mentioned specifically, I just want to make sure that they are, are they listed on our app? And the cleanup specifically, is that on our Los Alamos app?
So, yes, the app has a event calendar, and I believe those are on the event calendar, correct?
On the cleanup day, I actually had a question from a resident this past week, and she asked, at cleanup day, are we accepting hazardous waste?
So, no, we do not accept hazardous waste. So, if they do have hazardous waste, our Waste Hauler, Universal Waste, does come out to pick that up, but you have to actually contact them to schedule that appointment. But at the cleanup event, no. It's bulky items, e-waste, and the shredding event.
Thank you.
Question. City Manager, on the senior scam education, I know we're Los Alamos, but is there any way that we could work with Seal Beach, considering they have 9,000 seniors? Just to make sure, we want to protect all of our seniors and not just in our boundary lines.
I actually have a meeting scheduled with the Seal Beach City Manager, and I believe it's actually next week. It's something definitely I can add to the agenda.
Yeah, no reason to reinvent the wheel. Just-
Of course.
Let's get it out to everybody we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have two questions. Mr. Noda, is there a weight limit that, for the bulky items to, or is there anything you could just, as many?
No, you know, it's whatever you could fit in your own personal vehicle. And we've had in the past people come multiple times, so you could come, you know, at 8:00, and if you really want to go back home loaded up again, you can come back a second time as well.
Awesome. And then, Mr. Simmons, will you also be including VIPs? Because I understand that to help with Neighborhood Watch, that could also assist with that kind of stuff that occurs with crime in the city.
I'm actually glad that you asked that question, Councilwoman. So, there's been a couple of different conversations between my chief and the chief. Sorry, I'm very possessive. The chief and myself about how exactly we might deploy our volunteers in policing and how exactly that ultimately leads to not only getting information out, but also how to generate Neighborhood Watch campaigns. And so, this is part of an ongoing effort. As you know, we are halfway through the 12 months of public safety here in Los Al. And I think before we reach the end of that, we will have a full-fledged plan to actually share with the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Anything else? Okay, next up, we have the warrants. And just for the benefit of the public, the warrants are provided to the council in advance. We get them the week before the meeting, and council members are offered the opportunity to ask questions from the staff that have been responded to, as far as I've seen. Any additional questions can be handled similarly through email. So, at this point, I'm just going to ask for a motion on the warrants.
I'd like to make a comment.
A comment or a question?
A comment.
Okay.
I've been particularly critical of the city's finances since I joined council. And everyone's going to hate to hear it again, the $10 million in the audited financials, the budget, the warrants. This is the first month that things that I've been requesting have been delivered. And one of the reasons why this has been so important is because, as a new council member, I don't get to go on trainings. Like most council members, when you're new to council, you go up to Sacramento and you attend the League of California Cities, and there's certain trainings, and so, I don't have the benefit of that. So, when I approach the warrants, all I have is questions. And last month, time and time again, no, no, no invoice, no invoices, no invoices. And so, that got so much attention. I spent hours on the phone with the residents and people from around the county. It got so much attention that this month, that was changed. So, this, all these, this is all invoices, this is all just financial information, and it looks good. And I want to say thank you to everyone who's been paying attention, because I have been critical. And for the first time, I'm going to vote, in a long time, I'm going to vote yes on the warrants, because questions were addressed, POs were delivered, invoices were delivered, contracts were delivered. And as someone who, I'm already suspicious of politicians already, I'm already suspicious of government. And so, being told no, you can't even look at something, it heightens that, so.
Well, I'll make a question.
Okay. Hold on one second. I just want to address one thing. We've had a procedure in place for quite some time, and I don't think you've ever been told, or anybody's been told no. I think it was, it's a combination of things and when you can get responses. So, I don't want the public to think that anyone up here or the city staff is doing anything inappropriately. The warrants are made available to the public on the website. Everything is transparent, and again, if you have follow-up questions, feel free to continue to ask the staff. And I think that's why Mayor Doby, you know, put that policy in place. So, I just want to make it clear that at least I do not think that there's anything inappropriate going on or that there's anything that the city is hiding. But I also wanted to just point out the fact that my first year, I didn't get any trainings either. It's just kind of trial by fire, and you get through it. So, if there's any other, unless there's any other comments.
Yes, I have a comment. Well, I know that each one of us have different issues or concerns that are addressed, and I can agree with Councilmember Hibbard, there has been an extended time when I have requested invoices or statements, and I wasn't, it wasn't received. And there wasn't an acknowledgement or response in regards to when I would receive those invoices or statements. However, as of today, I received all the invoices I inquired about, statements. I even received an address by Mr. Simmons where he responded to all my concerns and any type of questions that I had of legal disputes and all the proactive measures that the city is taking to limit the exposure. So, but I can speak for myself that I, like Councilmember Hibbard, there was a time when it was an extended amount of time for any acknowledgement or response in regards to receiving any invoices.
City Manager, just some information. How long did it take for staff to answer these 56 questions and receive all the backup documentation that we've already approved those expenditures on through our budget?
Well, so, per the policy, and forgive me, I'm going to back up just a little bit. But the policy that we have in place essentially is that we will get the warrants out to the council at a minimum, a week in advance of the next council meeting. And the city clerk can confirm this, if she can, that we have been doing our best to get, to actually beat that deadline, which I think, I don't think it was this meeting, but the meeting before, we actually had it out two weeks prior to the agendized meeting. The idea is that council members will receive this on Monday. They have the entire week in order to read the warrants, find questions, and submit them to the staff by Thursday. I'm sorry again, city clerk, the deadline-
Is noon.
Is noon. We then will turn around and try to generate as much information as we can prior to noon on the following Monday and prior to the council meeting. I will say this just from an organizational standpoint. We do not have the most robust record retention system. All of our documents are actually paper. As the council knows, we're in the process of trying to modernize that system. So, it does take a lot of time in order to be able to actually go and take these paper documents, scan them, put them into a folder, find the contracts, put them into a folder. So, I would say roughly that this effort took probably two days of staff within the finance department working solely on this, in addition to the time for the city clerk to be able to coordinate it along with the other answers that had to come from other department heads. So, it is incredibly time-consuming. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're providing the information that is needed in a timely manner. That being said, like anything, and I think I've made this clear in the past, this is about resource allocation at the end of the day. And if this is an op, this particular item in terms of trying to get, I can't remember the exact number of requests, but I believe there was over 50 of them. Being able to provide contracts and backup documents for those are, they are time-consuming.
I just want to make sure that we're, I mean, we've said for you and staff, an incredible amount of goals and tasks in your day-to-day job, and I just want to make sure that this isn't going to override any of those, chasing after $12.57 invoices. Not sure what that information is proving. This is all stuff that, like I say, we've approved on the budget and we've appropriated, you know, as required. So, I just want to make sure that this isn't going to take precedence, two or three days of work before every council meeting to be able to address these things.
That is something that the staff have asked to actually start compiling, what exactly is the time commitment in order to generate this type of document.
Okay, thank you.
My hope is to use this as, for me, to familiarize myself with certain vendors or the services they provide. So, being that I wasn't able to get a lot of invoices or get invoices, being able to get these now incredibly helpful. And my hope would be that the following month and the next month, I'm going to be, you know, I'm going to become more familiar with invoices. It's not my intention to be laborious in my requests, but it is my obligation, it is my duty. It's our duty up here as council members to steward the taxpayers' dollars. I get grilled when I go home and I've got neighbors saying, hey, what are you spending my money on? I owe that to them. I want to be very transparent. And so, when they ask me financial questions and I don't have an answer, that news article that came out, it got a ton of attention, because they're telling me, stay on them. What's going on? What's going on? It got a lot of attention, so-
I'm going to go ahead and-
Reiterate.
I'm going to go ahead and move forward, but again, this information is public. It is available to the public on the website. So, if I can get a motion?
Motion.
I will second it.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Mayor Nofolda?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby? Councilmember Hibbard?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Are there any items that are asked to be pulled?
I'd like to pull all of them. The reason I'd like to pull all of them is I've had, in these conversations with residents over the past month, a lot of neighbors don't like that the consent calendar, they don't have the benefit of discussion. So, more for their benefit than for mine. If I can pull everything and get a brief staff update on them, please.
Okay. If we can get a staff update on item A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for proposals for us to go out and actually redo the existing chain-link fence at Laurel Park. As you are aware, we are required, given the low threshold that we have within the city charter-
City Manager Simmons, may I interrupt you? Item A is approval of minutes.
Excuse me. See, this is why we have Dr. Noda around, to ensure that I actually answer the right questions. The, hold on just one second, if you will bear with me. A is the approval of the minutes.
Okay.
B is the request for proposals, as I was saying, for the, this is actually to allow us to go out to RFP to solicit bids for the replacement of the chain-link fence at Laurel Park. The next is the approval for a resurfacing, again, to go out and solicit proposals for Laurel Park for the resurfacing of the tennis court. Let's see here.
On C, can you talk about pickleball courts?
Of course. The idea here, and Mr. Noda, please correct me if I'm wrong, but is to actually transition one of the pickleball courts into, I'm sorry, one of the tennis courts into pickleball courts.
Correct. One tennis court will be converted to two pickleball courts.
Yes. The, following that-
Item D?
Which is D.
RFP, authorization, the bid for the Los Alamos Police Department Vehicle Canopy Project?
Right, and this is to provide shade coverings for the parking lot where we house the police vehicles, in particular, the vehicle that contains the K-9 unit.
Can you talk about how the canopy will be affixed to the building? Those specific for a resident.
Those are handled within the specs, within the RFP, and so, they will meet all of the California building standards.
I want to add that it's not only just vehicles, but the evidence, the storage area needs additional space, especially exterior space. So, this canopy will also cover the evidence room exterior area.
Thank you. The next item is the, is actually an appropriation of funds in order to move to the next stage of the community center rehab project. As you know, the two buildings, Community Center 1 and Community Center 2, are currently under construction. Luckily, with both of these instances, we'll be using grant funding in order to achieve these actual improvements. The first building, which suffered significant storm damage during the last state of emergency, we are pursuing a Federal Emergency Management Agency grant in order to pay for that in the tune of $1.7 million. The second appropriation will come from the $2.5 million that we were able to secure with the help of Senator Janet Nguyen, which was a line item, the first time the state has given the city a line item within its budget. The nice thing about this is that by being able to use the company that is on site already, we are anticipating that we can complete the entire project by this summer, which is no small feat, given the amount of work that is going on. And not to take this into a very 30,000-foot-view place, but for what it has equated to in terms of city funds that we are actively putting into this, which in total will be about $250,000, once we're able to actually pay all of the matching grant funds that we would have, would be on the hook for. We're essentially getting two brand-new buildings with two brand-new roofs that have been stripped to the walls, have been completely updated with new flooring, new offices. Also, has had the, and this is a grant that we're currently working on, had the ability to actually house our primary EOC and having that actually double as our new council chambers. So, again, I'll hand it to the Development Services Team and the Finance Team for being able to craft a project where not only the community is going to realize a true benefit that they can see, use, and touch on a daily basis going forward, but that they got two buildings completely redone for about $250,000 of city money, which is, again, no small feat.
How many risers are at this building?
Sorry, risers?
Maybe Kobe, like sprinklers?
These are, again, buildings that were built in the 60s and the 70s and do not currently have those kind of retrofits. Okay, and then, moving on to- Okay, and then moving on to the last item is a consideration for a, a, a potential consolidation with the November 5th ballot for the potential for a charter amendment. I would probably start by saying that this is the first step in this process. Essentially, what I would consider this as is an information gathering situation. The council will remember that three goals were presented to you as potential items for the staff to be working on for this year. This is one of those items that we're now bringing back to you for the council's consideration to move forward with. The idea would be to go through the charter and then ultimately go out to the public and see if there are items within our charter that they would like to see changed. Staff has looked through the charter and has identified a couple of different sections that are either no longer in compliance with state law or have caused significant problems in terms of our daily operations. Two of those being with regards to districts. One, that the old, the charter as it currently stands highlights a process in which the city would transition into districts. As you all are aware, the city has already transitioned into districts based on California state law. This process that is spelled out within the, within the charter is no longer compliant, and as such, we would look to strip it from the charter. The second is the mention of term limits. The charter does set up term limits with regards to ad hoc council members. This will give the opportunity to further establish district term limits going forward and call them out specifically. Particularly, the most important one that staff has identified is that within the charter itself, and Mr. Noda, if I miss something, please step in, that currently for public works projects, those are the work that we do out on the streets or that our public works team does. Anything that goes above $10,000, we're required to come and seek authorization from the city council in order to take that out to a formal bid process. That number was established back in the 1960s when $10,000 was a significant amount of money. This has hindered us in terms of not only having to take five to six months of going through the RFP process, but also it has put us in a position where we miss out on vendors simply because they don't want to have to go through the process of actually filling out paperwork for a $15,000 project. Luckily, the state of California has already addressed this. They have actually put into place, I'm sorry, city attorney, if you know, the public works.
It's, it's in the Public Contract Code, but it's referred to as the Uniform Cost Accounting Act, which through the Public Contract Code enables municipalities to implement through an ordinance a streamlined process for building out public works projects using their own city forces, and then also establishes different financial thresholds, all subject to approval by the council, that specify different procedures for bidding projects. So throughout that entire legislative scheme, a city is always required to go with the lowest responsible bidder. So, so in terms of financial responsibility oversight, everything remains the same in terms of how public bidding is, or the result of this public bidding. But it does allow cities to incorporate certain streamlined procedures where, for example, you can have a pre-approved list of vendors or contractors that you can look to, to solicit bids rather than going through council to issue out a formal RFP that can, in essence, take a lot of time for a city such as ours that meets once a month regularly. So I, I think what we're looking to do with the charter is to put the charter in a place that doesn't tie the city's hands, but would allow the council to consider other options to move forward with public procurement. So that's just one of the areas that the public works department has looked at and thought, okay, maybe it's time to, to modernize these provisions to give us some more tools at our disposal.
Thank you, sir. And as I mentioned, these are just items that staff has identified. The next step of this would actually be to put together a survey much along the same parameters that we did with Measure Y, and actually take these questions out to the public, see if there are other items that they think should be placed within a potential charter amendment. Be able to collect all that information, bring it back to the city council for you all to make a decision as to whether or not, A, you wish to do a charter amendment, and then B, what type of language and what kind of changes would be included within that potential amendment or update. And then you would have the ability to make that decision at the time. So like I said, this is the first step in that process, and I would characterize it largely as the, the information gathering and the education portion of, of the effort. And that's, I believe, all the items on the consent calendar. And I will note, and again, city clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a certain category of items that fall within consent calendar. It's not a, I'll say, a, a choice. We, we don't sit around and think, well, this one's consent, this one's discussion. There is a fairly set or regimented set of rules that have to be followed in terms of where exactly something falls on the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify that for the council, as the city clerk will tell you, I try to make everything a consent calendar item.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, item number 12, a special orders of the day. City Attorney, can you give us a staff report on this?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to, happy to. Again, this is item 12A on the agenda. This is a council member requested agenda item. This has been brought forward at the request of Councilmember Murphy, and it pertains to questions she had raised during the council's January 16th regular meeting with respect to the city council's approval of its travel and reimbursement policy. So this has been brought forward in accordance with our city council agenda policy. So what's presented to you this evening is an informational staff report that addresses some of the issues that were raised at that meeting. What we're looking for from the council at this point is simply direction. Again, for our policy, there's really a two-step process here. The first step is to bring forward an informational staff report. The council can look at it, you can decide if you would simply like to receive and file the report, or alternatively, if the council would like to engage in further discussion or deliberation, we could accept a vote from the majority of the council to agendize this at a future meeting for fuller discussion. So with that, I'll, I'll send it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wants to make this a motion to, for further direction?
I have a question. What, in layman's terms, what, what is this saying? Are we, are we trying to define the difference between salary and compensation?
So, so I'll respond briefly to that. The questions that were raised at, at this particular council meeting, to my understanding, was questioning whether council could approve a travel reimbursement policy given our local ordinances and state law rules governing compensation of council members. And so the advice that was given at that time was that there's a legal distinction between council member compensation or salary on one hand and reimbursement for expenses such as travel, hotels, mileage, so forth, on the other. So what the informational staff report here provides is just a run-through of that analysis indicating, yes, that, that is, that is the case, and this is the law that shows you that there's a difference between these two things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'll just, I just ask, oh.
I'll move to receive and file.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion for, do we need a motion to receive and file?
Yes, please just to close it out.
Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number 13, public hearing. This is ordinance 2024-01, noise standard exemptions associated with construction and property maintenance activities, developmental services. If I can get a staff report?
Thank you, sir, and I'm going to turn this one over to Mr. Noda.
I just want to clarify, do we want to open the public hearing first, or would we like to have the staff report first?
I think the staff report, and then we'll open it.
Okay, copy that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right, so the proposed ordinance was initially brought on by the planning commission. The ordinance was some internal consistency within the zoning code involving construction and maintenance hours throughout the work of the weekday and the weekend. So the planning commission asked staff to bring this before them, and so it says right here that October 25th was the first time they went out there. Staff to talk, talk it through with the planning commission. And ultimately, the planning commission voted on and recommended the, the, the changes, which I'm about to detail, to city council for approval. So one was part A, it's for LAMC 17 dot 20 dot 020 exemption. So the noise sources associated with construction activities between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on weekdays and Saturdays. So this is for construction activities. It's on Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and not, it does not take place at any time on Sundays or federal holidays. Noise associated with maintenance of real property, again, maintenance of real property, is Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but on Sundays and federal holidays from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Then you're going to ask, again, it was clarification. Construction activities means the building or enlargement of any structure, demolition, excavation, modification, alteration, substantial repair, remodeling, or grading of any real property. And maintenance of real property means a routine, recurring, and usual work for the preservation or protection of real property and improvement, including lawn mowing, tree trimming, pruning, painting, power washing, gutter cleaning, similar undertaking that do not constitute construction activities. Right, so again, there was some clarification language that the planning commission placed that is before the council tonight. Again, it's a definition of construction activities, a definition of maintenance, and of course, some changing of the times associated with those activities. That is the end of the staff reports. I'm here to answer any questions.
Before we go to the council, I'll open it up now for any public comment. Or public hearing?
Y'all didn't ask your parents how they felt about this before you came? You just going to sit here the whole time and say nothing?
Okay, having no public comments, I will close the public hearing for comments and ask the council if there are any questions.
Have questions?
Sure.
So our neighborhood, because we have very large lots, seem to be going through construction fatigue. It started during COVID and it still hasn't finished. The usual violators that work on Sundays say that they're just doing it themselves. It's home improvement projects. That includes a patio made out of steel and everything else. So, and now we've got an ADU going two doors down from us that's there seven days a week. I'm, first, I'm concerned that maintenance of real property, and it says, protection of real property and improvements could fall under maintenance and allow them to work on Sundays. My neighbors are just asking for just one day where they just don't have to hear the power tools. The fact that it starts, and I thought Saturday started at 8:00 currently. I thought it went to eight from, eight to four on Saturdays.
No, it's 7:00, 7:00 a.m.
Is it?
Yeah.
That just seems early for a Saturday, considering the residential area of it. So I just want to make sure that this is enforced. Construction activities, I would say that any homeowner that's doing improvements that they would call maintenance of real property, if they pulled a permit, that is now construction, and we can differentiate that. Hopefully, they're pulling a permit, or you're getting calls from the neighbors saying, what in the world are they doing at 9:00 o'clock at night? Which happened the other night, putting on a roof. So it's just really about the, just the level of enforcement. We've got a house on the corner of us that's been under construction for five years, and it's nowhere near being close to the end of it, but they're living in it. So it's just, like I say, we're just really, we've got construction fatigue, and it's with ADUs and the new regulations that the governor has not instilled in ADUs. It's just going to get worse, and especially in our areas. We've got 10,000 square feet lots, so there's plenty of room for a fourplex in my backyard. So, that's it.
Yes.
If I could add something to that, I think hearing the concerns you've raised, this was discussed in length at the planning commission, which I sat for as well, and I think they had similar concerns. Part of the effort here was the code previously made a distinction between maintenance versus construction activities, but didn't make any effort to try to differentiate. So part of what's been done here with this language is to try to give cues that will help the code enforcement officers in interpreting the code, and ultimately will be their interpretation as to whether or not this is something that's maintenance, like a reoccurring sort of lawn mowing or weed whacking, things like that, versus construction, which is more substantial enlargement. Or you mentioned hammers basically pounding would fall within construction presumably. The one thing I would like to mention also is that this section is, is a list of exceptions to the general noise standards. So during these windows of time, someone could temporarily exceed the noise standards that have been, that have been established for that neighborhood. But if anyone's constructing outside the hours listed here, that's a violation in and of itself if it's, if it's outside those standards, so.
Right, my concern is, we've got one continuing offender, and he's been doing construction every Saturday and every Sunday. October was two years. When code enforcement goes and stops him, he tells him to pound sand. He's doing it himself, it's not a crew. I hear metal being cut. I, it's just, and it's two years now. So I just want to make sure that there is definitely a distinction. I'd also be in favor of moving the start type up on Saturdays till an hour later? I mean, 7:00 on Saturdays for working folk and kids and babies and everything, that just seems a little early. But I will go with my colleagues.
I'm sorry, just to understand, was that moving the hour up for both, what's been classified as maintenance as well as construction here?
Yeah, I mean, basically, seven to eight would be nice, just to have a nice little, 7:00 just seems really early on a Saturday or a Sunday to be woken up to the sound of chainsaws.
And if I could just add one more thing, because it, a lot of this was actually discussed at the planning commission, so we had a little bit of a dress rehearsal on some of this. One suggestion that was made, or a distinction that was inquired about at least, was whether it matters if it's just, you know, me doing a home improvement project or if I actually have hired a contractor and crew to come on site. The way this reads, it, there's no carve-out or greater leniency for an individual who happens to be hanging drywall with his brother-in-law or something like that.
Which I love that.
It's just.
Because the guy behind.
Doing construction activities and is that, you know, making noise and causing distress to your neighbors.
The one neighbor is like, I don't have a crew, these are just family and friends, and they're not a construction crew. And I'm like, well, if that's the loophole, I, I completely agree with that. There should be no distinction between whether it's a hired crew or, you know, you and a couple of buddies building an ADU in the backyard for two years.
I'd advocate closing that loophole, because why should you be able to profit or benefit just because you don't need the outside help? Because I could see that becoming an issue later, because then there is a disparity. Because they, they get a favor of some sorts, because they can physically do it themselves, whereas little old me would have to hire a group. So if we can close that, I would be in favor of that, too.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, I think that, that is not present here. There's not that loophole here. It's if it's construction and it's making noise, this is what we're talking about now. And again, that was some of the discussion that was had, is if you had, if you tried to differentiate between a homeowner or a tenant-based project versus an outside contractor, it's just an additional headache for code enforcement in and of itself in terms of trying to enforce this. They shouldn't be asked to go on the property and try to discern, oh, is this, you know, family members doing this, or is this a licensed contractor? Now, the bottom line is, you refuse to call because someone's doing construction activity on this date.
And we have a lot of contractors that live in Carrier Row, and they do a lot of their own work. So, you know, they get an advantage because of their job title, so, thank you.
Can I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm taking notes, and I just want to clarify. So the, it sounds like a motion to essentially move the 7:00 a.m. start time on Saturday to 8:00 a.m. on Saturday.
I'd love it to be nine, but I'll compromise today. I'd love it to be 11:30.
Okay.
She'd love to have it at all.
Yeah, exactly, we're just tired.
I can second an 8:00 start, though.
That's just Saturday?
Well, Sunday's nine, and then Monday through Friday. Well, Sunday's nine, and then Monday through Friday would be seven.
Right. And so for construction activities, there's no exemption for any construction noise on Sundays or federal holidays. So it would be an eight o'clock to 8:00 PM period where you can make this type of noise on weekdays, oh, and on Saturdays, for, for construction activities. And the noise associated with maintenance can only take place between, under the motion would be eight o'clock to 8:00 PM on weekdays and Saturdays, and between nine and six on Sundays and federal holidays. So, so as written, the maintenance, so you want to mow your lawn or trim trees, you could do that on a Sunday under this code, because that would be considered maintenance. But you're not going to be on someone's roof on a Saturday putting a new roof on, or Sunday, so.
Right.
What's the current start time for construction Monday through Friday?
Seven.
Is it seven now?
7:00 AM.
Seven.
Yeah, it had been 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM was the existing code.
And that seems reasonable to me. People are getting ready for work, school, and everything else, it's just the Saturday that just kills me.
Okay, I'm sorry, if I can understand that. So you're okay with the 7:00 AM through 8:00 PM for construction activities on weekdays, but you want to push Saturdays back an hour?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the weekdays are fine, that's how it's been, and that's fine. No federal holidays, obviously. We had a guy building a pool on Labor Day. That was fun.
Is it possible to expressly define the construction or maintenance activities, such as what they did in La Palma?
That's, so this new section B, I don't know if anyone can look in their staff report, but there is, there's both a track changes version as well as the new proposed language. The new subsection B where there's definitions being added was, was an attempt to try to, I guess, specify what, you know, a definition for maintenance versus construction, and that was done by staff after looking, after looking at other cities and trying to compile what seemed like a workable definition of those activities. So if it's the council's desire to continue to tweak that, we certainly can. It's just what's being presented to you this evening is where the planning commission ended up with a recommendation to you all to consider.
Is it also based on the noise DBA? A lot of these, construction and maintenance of the real property that's referenced?
Yeah, so throughout the noise ordinance, there are DBA standards that set the threshold. So what this section is saying is that during these specified time periods, there's an exception that would allow you to, you know, you could run a circular saw or something that ordinarily may be above the DBA limits for that residential neighborhood, but if it's construction during these periods of time, there's an exception from that.
Dr. Noda, would this give our code enforcement enough with the ordinance, the way it's written, to be able to enforce that without? I know currently now it's a little bit hard, because there are so many vague areas. Will this give them enough to continue to do their jobs?
I believe so. I just, I just want to clarify, we do have code enforcement for seven days a week, right? We have people here, code enforcement team members. Their typical time is from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, right? So during those times, I believe they are very, very proactive in, you know, patrolling the city and trying to look for, you know, these instances here. You mentioned about a roofer being up on a roof at 9:00 PM at night. Unfortunately, we don't have code here consistently at that time, but, and if you or any resident of Los Alamos sees something like that at eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock, 5:00 AM in the morning, again, typically we don't have code here. We do have an app that does a code enforcement case, or, you know, what I would do is I would also call police, PD, they can assist us as well. But we can bring them in at nine o'clock at night, I do have on-call people. But yes, to answer your question, yes, this will allow them to go out there and enforce the noise ordinance related to construction and maintenance better, yes.
And I have given my neighbors the app, and they really liked it, because they feel they can register their complaint and then move on, knowing that it's going to get taken care of, even if it's Saturday night. It's not going to stop then, but the homeowners are going to receive a notification that they need to knock it off.
Correct.
Okay.
Wait, is there any consideration to lining up the code enforcement hours with the hours that we have on file, or should we just call the police?
Those are very long hours, seven days a week. We would need more code enforcement officers.
Or do it the other way, just no construction after five.
You gonna have a fight on your head.
Well, I'm just saying, that's not, that's the runway or the other, so.
Yeah, if I can offer this too, as well, as part of this, should the council decide to move forward, we will obviously have to enter into an education campaign, which I feel like I say every time at a council meeting, in order to essentially put out a Good Neighbors type of program where we can inform everybody of what exactly the rules are. Some of this might be just ignorance to the rules, I like to think that about our residents. So by putting them on notice that there have been changes, and then also what we can do on the enforcement side is that we can also stagger our hours when we have decided that there's a project that needs to be addressed, where we can shift code enforcement hours to have somebody on-site in order to be able to patrol certain areas and try to take advantage of the fact that they don't know we're coming. So that's one of the things that we have done, shifting around different priorities within the code enforcement. You'll notice that, you'll, from the weekly, that code enforcement has special projects that they handle throughout the course of a week. Some weeks it'll be inoperable vehicles, sometimes it'll be places where dumping has occurred, those kind of things. So we also have the ability to cite this as a project, and again, tackle it that way. And then obviously, if it's unsuccessful, we can talk about different ways that we can deploy in order to gain compliance.
And honestly, I think this is the late night one, that's probably the first time I've ever heard anybody going that late. It's mainly the weekends and everything. I had an interesting conversation with one of my neighbor offenders, and said, you know, he wasn't aware of the hours for construction. And I said, well, it was on your permit. Well, I didn't pull my permit, my general did, so he didn't feel it was responsible to know that information. So I think that's where the education, just because the general pulled it, it's your address and your property, so you're responsible for understanding the rules.
And I think that that along with maybe looking at some of the ways that we require people to pull permits and notifications, that also is something that we can add into the arsenal of tools that we can use to try to address this.
Can we link the permits to the route checks?
Yes, that, it's exactly what I was saying, is that we know where the, where potential construction is going to be taking place, then we can actually start actually using that as kind of the baseline going forward.
All right, so, is there anything I need to say special?
I'll ask the city clerk and the city attorney, but I believe that there is a motion to amend. See, this is where I'm going to stop, just go right ahead.
Yeah.
So my understanding that there's a motion to move the item forward with the amendment being that noise related to construction on Saturdays would be changed from 7:00 AM till 8:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's the motion on the table, and if that moves, then I can go ahead and read the ordinance in.
Okay, all those in favor?
Nope.
Did we have a second? I apologize.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I can go ahead and read the ordinance in now. So before you for consideration, is ordinance number 2024 dash 01 entitled, "In ordinance of the City Council, the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending and Restating Section 17.20.020 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Concerning Noise Standard Exemptions Associated With Construction and Property Maintenance Activities. This is zoning ordinance amendment 23 dash 05." Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now we have the city council announcements. I'll go ahead and start. I attended several meetings and events since we were here last time, but there's just two I want to mention. I really wanted to extend another thank you to Colonel Fox for the race on the base on Saturday. I want to thank our staff for putting that on in such short notice. I thought it was a fantastic event. I thought it was a great turnout for, you know, the two months notice that we, that we have, so I really appreciate that, and I wanted to say thanks. And then also, I just wanted to remind the public that UCI Health has now officially taken over the Los Alamos Medical Center, and I'm looking forward to how they expand and grow and how they can serve our citizens. So it was a very nice event that took place a couple weeks ago, and they seem very committed and dedicated to continuing the services that they offer the community. With that, I will go to my right to Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Let's start with OCFA, had my budget and finance committee meeting. Happy to report that the UAL is 93.75% funded. To date, it saved us $76.7 million in interest. We plan on having that completely paid off by 2026, which doesn't sound so far away anymore. So what they did, and what the city has kind of adopted in a much smaller level, is they had the, the model where any, any budget surplus after the actuals and everything, 50% went towards CIP projects, 50% went towards paying off the unfunded liability. We enacted something similar to that, it wasn't a 50/50, but it, there is a set percentage that we're going to throw at the unfunded liability when we do have a surplus. That was one of the promises that we made when we passed our Measure Y, and we're holding, we're holding to it. I also, I'm chair of the OCFA CIP committee. We do a forecast CIP for five years. Price escalators are factored into these numbers, and the reason being is, the example is the fire truck that cost three years ago was $1.5 million with a 12-month lead time. Today, that same truck costs $3 million with a 24-month lead time. So even though we're forecasting out five years, we need to budget that increase in appropriately. Our CIP is broken into four funds, it's a general fund CIP, it's fire stations and facilities, communication and information systems, and fire apparatus. For 2425, we've allocated $26 million for CIP projects, hopefully to get the city up there real close to that one day. So we're doing all kinds of stuff, we're, we're, keep those investments, Craig, come on, we're there, we're almost there.
I'm going to have to get the defibrillator for Dr. Noda.
That's right, okay. I'll just bring in the other Dr. Noda to help with that. So, you know, we're moving forward, we've got three fire station, new construction, Yarbelinda Mission Viejo and Laguna Woods. I reminded everybody that Station Two, our little bitty station here, was built in 1944 and had a remodel in 1998. Not a big remodel, but I am absolutely throwing that in their face whenever I get the chance, so everybody knows 44. And we are at the bottom of the list as far as the age of stations. So, and then, I was thrilled to finally attend our first senior advisory committee. Our consultants are two research professors at Cal State Fullerton who oversee the gerontology department. They are so excited about this program that they want to make Los Allo the poster child to implement the senior plan and share it with other cities, with, with our program being the star, which is just awesome. We have some big names on the committee who are all absolutely engaged, including UC Irvine Health, OCFA, Long Beach Memorial, Los LPD. They're all offering suggestions and resources that our little city doesn't, but UCI Health might. Same thing with Long Beach Memorial, so everybody was really excited about that. So yeah, we're looking forward to it. There was definitely some excitement there. Los Allo Community Foundation for the fireworks coming up, we start selling July 1st. Going through the fourth, we finalize insurance, location, seller's permits, and fire marshal permits. And then we'll be holding Zoom meetings with all of the nonprofits that are going to be helping us with staffing, now that we know a little bit more than what we knew last year. And so do the nonprofits, it'll be a much more engaged group about, you know, lessons learned from last year and things, so, but we're in a good spot moving forward. And then I attended with the mayor the district jazz festival that included Los Allo High School, McCullough and Oak. Any one of these groups would sell out spaghetini in a heartbeat. They were absolutely amazing. I was able to take my son, which, which meant a lot, because Justin Padilla is over this whole program, and he was both of my boy's seventh grade music teacher that got them both interested in music, and to see what he's done with this program is absolutely amazing. And then I was able to attend Senator One's Women of Distinction along with the police chief, and we knew of one woman of distinction who was being honored, and that was our wonderful, always happy, always wanting to work, Vips Anna Billick. And she was able to receive that award and talk with the senator. And then surprisingly, we had Councilmember Dobie also get the Women of Distinction, and she thought she was going to fly under the radar, but we were there. So I just, both of these women are well-deserved. I want to thank Councilmember Dobie for continually raising the bar, for how we engage, how we behave, and how we're received by people outside of our city. So appreciate both women, and looking forward to other things, and that's all I've got.
Councilmember Murphy?
Good evening, everyone again. I wanted to move to have a presentation done by Yunji Russ of UCI, mind of UC Irvine. She had a presentation along with a physician, a colleague of hers, at a previous Rotary meeting, and they had, it was an amazing, really knowledgeable, really informative presentation about dementia and Alzheimer's, and I'd like to have her, as well as her physician, present in June at our council meeting, so that, which coincides with Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And I'm hoping someone will second that with going ahead and moving to have that done.
Well, I think that would be great at one of the Thursday events that the seniors are at, any.
I've already talked to them about that also. I'm going to do that, I've already spoken with the Gallaghers about having that. But I also just want to have it so it's open for the community to hear at a presentation, if possible.
Y'all got room in June?
I'll second that.
So I will say this, I don't think that there is a particular problem with it, but I'll need to check with the city clerk. I do know that we do have UCI Medical coming in May to give a presentation as well, so maybe there's an opportunity for them to tag team a little bit there as well.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to coincide, because June is the awareness for Alzheimer's, so that's why I was looking for June, if possible. I also just wanted to give a special thank you to Mr. Noda, as well as Mr. Simmons. One of my neighbors had requested that our College Park North neighborhood wall, which had different discoloration with the paint that had been covered several times over, I'm assuming years due to graffiti and anything else, that I was initially informed that it was going to take four to six weeks, and they were there, Mr. Miguel de la Torre, he was there for the last week painting our wall in less than two weeks. So I just wanted to make sure I thank him, because he was out there today and it was pretty hot. So, and just wanted to thank you guys for having it expedited. Also, I wanted to just go over a few events that I attended over the last month. I attended the Youth Centers Casino Fiesta Event at Rush Park, which is, if anyone doesn't know, the Youth Center is dedicated to transforming the lives of children, one family at a time. And Lena Lumay, who is one of my neighbors, is the executive director and CEO, and she's just completely phenomenal about all the stuff that she's done with Youth Center and her vision for the Youth Center. I was also grateful to be a part of the CPRS District 10 Awards and Installation Banquet in Fountain Valley. It was just a representation of passionate professionals that were recognized, such as our very own Los Alamos Unified School District, as well as Amy Payne from Summer Harvest. I attended the Spring Carnival at the Cottonwood Park, at Little Cottonwood Park. It was raining, but there was still just a huge presence by our community. It was raining, but there was still just a huge presence by our community, our community members, as well as our city staff, which was out there dropping the eggs for the kids to grab a hold of, as well as just, there was still face painting. I saw Chelsea getting her face painted. And you were also taking photos with Ghetto Peter Rabbit. I was also thrilled to be a part of the opening of the UCI Health in our Los Alamos and just the VIP celebration that recognized all the esteemed physicians, the dedicated medical staff, civic leaders, nonprofit organizations, and just to celebrate the union of Los Alamos Medical Center and UCI Health. I think it's gonna be incredible going forward. Finally, I was truly fired up to attend the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce Networking Luncheon at Petrini Pizza, which is just amazing as always, my, one of my favorite desserts. I, I had quite a few of the cannolis, and we featured our one and only Chet Simmons, our city manager for Los Alamos. And we sank our teeth into slices of pizza. We discussed all the hottest city buzz, and it was literally one of the tastiest luncheons I've attended. And I just want to thank Tony for the invite and just say that, thank everyone for all that they do.
Thank you. Councilmember Hibbert?
Thank you. I, this past Saturday, I attended the Race on the Base. And I think if I look at the time correctly, I came just behind, came in just behind the chief and Coach Fenton. I think I was just a little bit, just right behind you guys. Want to reiterate, thank you to Colonel Fox, who I believe is slightly coming out of his shell. He's been around town for, I don't know, a little over six months now, seven months, something like that. And he was pretty funny. He was, he was definitely working, working the crowd at Race on the Base. So thanks for having us, Colonel Fox. I also attended the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce at Petrini's Pizza. And it's challenging for me to go to a Chamber of Commerce meeting, not as a small business owner, but as a council member who, I don't do any business in the city on purpose. And so when I go, I, I love business, I love small business, I want to talk about things. And I'm on council, so I just get to hear what everyone else is doing. And it's, it's not exactly second nature for me because I want to jump in there and create something or invent something or solve a problem or do something. But I'm loving having, getting to know all the, the small business owners that are not only in Los Allo, but also Seal Beach. I attended a, I think they called it a speed, it was like speed dating for business owners. What do you do? What can I do for you in thirty seconds kind of a thing? So thank you Blair and Landon Petrini for, for hosting us. I used to go to church with, with both of them. One of the things that I've been doing lately is I've been going door to door and asking neighbors, introducing myself and asking neighbors if there's anything I could do for them. And you'll probably never guess what the most, was the most common responses that I get from people who open the door. They burst out laughing, and they say, "I can't believe a council member is gonna show up on my door on some random day and ask me if there's anything that I need." One neighbor, I want to quote them correctly, there was a gentleman who said, where was it? "I haven't had a council member knock on my door since Marilyn Poe." So Marilyn Poe, kudos to you. I'd love to meet you sometime. I have found that knocking on doors and just asking neighbors if there's something that they need, it cuts through a lot of the stuff that we discuss here, a lot of the, they say our meetings are boring. I would disagree, but they don't want to come to meetings. They'll watch it on Channel Three or they're live streaming it. So just knocking on someone's doors, I'm hearing the, the waste question that I asked earlier. I was knocking on someone's door and they asked if we could, you know, pick up certain types of hazardous waste. "I'll find out for you." Two guys asked me if I could mow their lawn. One guy asked me if I could finish planning his, uh, he was having some landscape done. I said, "Maybe I'll come back on Saturday." One neighbor had some traffic concerns on Los Allo Boulevard near Saint Hedwig Church. And so in the Highlands, we have a couple, we have actually several commissioners in the Highlands. So this, this Wednesday, we'll be actually going out to that spot where this neighbor had the concern, and two commissioners, myself and the resident, will just take a look. And that to me is, that's my favorite part about being on council. There's a lot of really dull stuff that needs to get done, but the highlight of, of being on city council for me is knocking on someone's door on a random Thursday and just asking if there's anything I could do for you, and just hearing whatever they say. And that, it has increased the number of emails I've been sending our city manager because when they tell me something, I have to pass it on. So thank you for fielding all those emails and taking care of all those things, but we're knocking them out. We're getting it done. Things are getting addressed. So this next month, I'll be walking around Apartment Row. So if you see me looking lost or just hanging out, then come and introduce yourself if I haven't met you yet, if you're watching this. One of the things I've also been doing is I've been sharing my phone number so that residents can call me. And I receive lots of phone calls that way, so I'll do that tonight. If we haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet, or if there's something that I can help you with, call me, call my cell. My number is five six two four 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 six seven five one, and that's five six two four 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 six seven five one. And I hope to hear from you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dobie?
All right. So I've been a busy little bee. I attended my ACCOC Board of Directors meeting, and then I also attended the mayoral roundtable that they hosted. And one of the major takeaways was having met a UCI admin and was able to connect him to the dedicated and unstoppable Emmeline to get some support for our Senior Master Plan, and that contact information was shared with our staff. I attended the League of California Cities Policy Committee meeting out in Burbank. Fun fact, I accidentally dently went twice. I thought I had to be out there on Thursday evening and Friday. Not on Thursday, but it's okay. I've got an excellent playlist on Spotify. Major takeaways from that were the support for current legislation regarding sober living regulations, hot topic in specifically South Orange County. And then also the HCD feedback and regulations, and that's regarding our housing and the number of units that each of us is responsible for. I attended and supported the Casino Fiesta for the Youth Center. I attended the OCSD Real Time Operations Center Tour, which was hosted by Sheriff Barnes. Major takeaway from that was seeing a center that is being built to support all Orange County cities through the sheriff's office. And that just really speaks volumes to what Orange County is doing to ensure the safety of its residents and its visitors. I attended the Spring Carnival, and although it was raining, I'm so glad that our city did not cancel because there were so many little babies out there, so many little people that the parents were like, "Oh, you know, it's my kid's first time. Thank you so much for still having this event." And then I tried to get the PD and the fire to do something with the extra eggs, like a steal the bacon type deal. It did not come to fruition. Maybe next year. I also attended the Good Morning Los Allo event. It was very well attended and exceptionally executed by my staff. I attended the OCOG Annual Conference. The major topics of discussion were housing and transportation. I attended the Community Economic Housing and Development Meeting hosted by SCAG. And then I also attended the UCI Health Welcome to Los Allo event. One of my major takeaways was discussing our Senior Master Plan and youth programming that's available through UCI with one of their executive admin. I also shared that information with our staff. And one of the big ones was I attended the Sacramento Advocacy Trip with ACCOC. Major takeaways were being able to directly question the staff member who is, he works for the Public Safety Chair regarding a Plan B that's being considered once the unintended consequences of passing Prop One become apparent. So my actual question was, because it seems like when you go and you speak to people in Sacramento, a lot of these things, it's a foregone conclusion. They're like, "Oh, Prop One is passing. It's a done deal." It's like, "Well, wait a minute. We had, all the votes haven't even been completely counted yet. What do you mean?" And that is the perspective that's given when we come as Orange County to ask any questions. So I'm still waiting on my answer, but being able to ask and then see that there has been no thought given to the unintended consequences of trying to get law enforcement to respond to someone in a mental health crisis, which is going to be exacerbated with these, I'm gonna stop because I feel myself, but it's okay. So I was also able to meet with Senator Scott Wiener, who was the author of the bill that mandated the inordinate amount of housing that we have been charged with producing. And I was able to express to him face to face how that directly impacts small cities. And when I tell you, he had no idea. He was like, "Wait, what do you mean? HCD doubled your number and you have federal land." I was like, "Sir, you tell me. How can you help me?" I realize you're Frisco, but the bill that you put in place directly and immediately impacts small cities. Eleven thousand five hundred, one point eight square miles, with a two-square-mile base that even if I wanted to, I'm not building on. So I actually missed the privilege of having a picture with our current senator because she invited us down to the Senate floor because I was talking to this gentleman about what can we do? And even though everybody was like, "Tanya, don't waste your time. Don't go talk to him. You're not gonna get anywhere." After speaking with him and being able to articulate to him that this is what your bill has done to my city, he's like, "You know what? Give me the information. Have your city send me the information, and I will reach out to HCD on behalf of your city." And you'd have to know all the players and have all the information, but when I tell y'all, that's a big deal because literally nobody else has been able to get that far. This is why, this is why I do my job. Like, this is a job for me. This is not a pastime. This is not, because I don't get paid enough, but this is a job. This is, you can see an immediate impact. I'm very passionate about the importance of my city's business, and this is why advocacy is and always will be a priority to me. Now, the last thing was I also attended the Chamber Luncheon that was hosted by the incomparable Petrinis. They're so gracious when they come. I so appreciate just the family atmosphere and ambiance that they provide to us. I also was able to hear our city manager share some updates from the city, and then he was very brave, and he took audience questions. I was very proud in that moment. And I was able to meet a new business owner. They're new to the area, but they could potentially help us with transportation for our Senior Master Plan. And I was also able to share that contact information with city staff. And lastly, I, I don't have articulation for how honored I am this evening. I don't, you know, shoots, if you're still watching, please let my assemblyman know that I'm honored. His words, I hear that he had to go into the office on a day off to record the message that was played here. And I don't take that lightly. I don't, I don't take that, that's not common, and I'm, I'm very appreciative. I'm very appreciative. So thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I, I did forget, and thanks to Councilmember Murphy for reminding me. I also attended the District Ten Awards and Installation Banquet, and I was honored to accept an award on behalf of our own city. The Parks and Rec Department won an agency award, and that just goes to show that the, the services that we provide to our community for such a small city, for any size city, is, is fantastic. And I was honored to accept that award. I forgot to bring it with me, but it is secure at my house, and I'll bring it in next meeting so everyone can enjoy it just as much as I do. Thank you. With that, I know that this is gonna be the longest meeting I've ever had, so we're gonna adjourn the regular meeting until 6:00 p.m. Monday, April 29th, 2024. Is that it?
We didn't have to do so many honors.